I'm all called to order the February 15th, 2010 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand for the presentation of colors by the Girl Scouts Brownie Troop 3558 Hornets Nest Girl Scout Council. If you'll please come forward.
Color guards, prepare to post colors. Post the colors. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I call for the invocation with Reverend Dr. Mark Erickson from the St. John's Lutheran Church.
I bring a greeting from St. John's, one of the oldest faith communities in the county, to you all and to the residents of Cabarrus County. Let us pray. Dearest Lord, you have provided us with a wonderful place to live in this Piedmont area of North Carolina. We're situated in a place that has so many folks and generally good weather. We thank you for the care, the passion of people in this area. We ask you to bless our county commissioners during this meeting. There are so many various things that they have to deal with, with better life in this county, with the conservation of the resources that you have given to us, and so many things that deal with your love to keep us away from chaos and in peace. We think this time of how it is difficult to be a government when we think of the government of Haiti and what they are putting up with and what we do not have to put up with here. Please take our prayers and lead each and every one of the commissioners in making decisions that will be helpful to the way of life in this county, but all to your glory, for it's in your most holy name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Will the young ladies come up and tell us who you are and a little bit about yourself? And when you finish introducing yourself, if you'll go to your left, Commissioner Carruth will have a pen for you, and you may want to lower that. Can you reach up there and lower it? There you go.
My name is Haley. My mom and dad's names is Crystal and Nick Enting, and I go to Rocky River Elementary School.
Thank you, Haley.
My name is Rose Marie Jean Orsia. My mother and father's names is David and Sarah Orsia, and I go to Pitt School Road Elementary School.
Thank you, Rose Marie.
My name is Mackenzie Roig. My parents' names is Adam and Dana Roig. I go to Rocky River Elementary School.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
My name is Alexandra. My parents' names is Adam and Dana Roig. I go to Rocky River Elementary School.
Yep, there you go. Why don't you go over here to your left?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Caitlin Wiltsy. My parents' names are Jennifer and Tim Wiltsy, and I go to Rocky River Elementary.
Thank you, Caitlin.
My name is Emily. My dad's name is David. My mom's name is Shan, and I go to Calais for it.
Thank you, Emily. Next matter we have is we have the minutes on the approval of minutes, and these are minutes from January the 5th, January the 19th, and February the 1st. They've already been sent out. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. Next we have is the agenda. We do have two additions. I call your attention to Addition C3, which is a resolution declaring February the 17th, 2010 as Boy Scouts of America Day. That's going to be presented by Commissioner Carruth, as well as in addition to the closed session, to discuss location or expansion of a business or industry and discuss a personnel matter. With that, are there any amendments or changes to the agenda as we have it?
I move we approve it with the change of note.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries. Next matter we have is C1, which is found on page 33. It's the Fair Presentation of the NCAOF State and IAFE International Awards. I call on Mrs. Gill and Mrs. Story to let us know what's going on.
Good evening. It is an honor to present to you and the citizens of Cabarrus County the 2009 Fair International State Recognitions and Awards. I'm Candace Story. I'm your fair manager. This is Tanya Gill, our fair coordinator, and we also have the privilege of working with two of our fair board members, Ms. Marion Cooper, who acts as our exhibit director, and Mr. Matt Barrier, who is our barn supervisor. First, we would like to present to you five Division One International Awards that we received from the International Association of Affairs and Expos. First, we won a first-place communications award for outstanding outdoor promotional advertising, two first-place competitive exhibit awards, one for outstanding interactive competitive exhibit, and another for outstanding general competitive exhibit display. We also won two second-place agricultural awards, one for our new green programs and the other for the best agricultural photo series.
At the state level, we received three state awards, the media award and the youth award for governmental affairs from the North Carolina Association of Agriculture Fairs and from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Sciences. We won the highly coveted Commissioner of Agriculture Award for the got-to-be NC Agriculture Exhibit in Category Three. Also, I would like to mention that Elizabeth Skinner, who was awarded the Youth Best in Show at the 2009 Cabarrus County Fair, also won the Youth Best in Show in the County Fair Showcase at the North Carolina State Fair in Raleigh. In addition, at the state convention, Candace was elected to serve a three-year term on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Association of Agricultural Fairs, and she was also appointed to serve on the media awards and convention committees for the state association.
At the convention, Tanya was selected by the president of the board to serve on the awards and the county fair showcase committees for the state association. We would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to serve you and the citizens of Cabarrus County, and please take confidence in knowing that the four of us are working diligently to prepare another award-winning fair.
Candace, let me ask you a couple of questions. How many did we have about that attended the fair last year? Yes, 2009?
We have 70,000.
Wow.
And that's not including exhibitors that come through, so total about 80,000.
And that was with about three days of rain that...
Yeah.
Well, y'all did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Next we have is a resolution honoring Branson Coltrane Jones, and I call on Commissioner Poole for this resolution.
We have a resolution from the commissioners to honor the memory and the achievements of Branson Coltrane Jones. I had the privilege of knowing Mr. Jones from the day that I came to Concord when I was born. He was my neighbor and a lifelong friend, but most importantly, he was the first economic development recruiter in the county and brought business and industry here. His whole life, he was spent making Concord and Cabarrus County a better place, and we sadly lost him on January the 31st. And so I am thankful that the commissioners will approve this resolution honoring him and all that he has done to contribute to Cabarrus County. Mrs. Jones was not able to be here tonight, and I will deliver this to her on my way home. But we are quite saddened in our family because we drive by that house every single day and do feel the loss, but he did do a lot for Cabarrus County, and I appreciate this resolution.
We have, the resolution was, is in our agenda tonight. We have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented in our agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add one slight personal comment as well?
Yes.
I didn't know him quite as long as Liz can claim, not since my birth, but since my birth in Cabarrus County because his, he and his wife Joan were probably the first or second neighbors in my area to come visit us as newcomers in 1976. So they're wonderful folks.
Next we have is C3, which is the amendment or in addition to our agenda. This is a resolution declaring February the 17th, 2010 as Boy Scouts of America Day. It's on page 177 of our agenda in Cabarrus County in honor of the 100th anniversary of the Boy Scouts, and I would call on Commissioner Carruth to present this information to us. And I don't know if there's anybody else that needs to be recognized to be brought up.
In fact, I would recognize Bob Weatherman, who is our district executive here with the Boy Scouts.
Mr. Weatherman, if you'll please come up.
And then also sitting in the audience is Andy Messmer. Andy is the scoutmaster for Troop 128 at Deppworth Methodist Church. It happens to be our troop where my boys have been in, and our youngest son just made Eagle Scout, celebrating their 50th anniversary this year as a Boy Scout troop, so had to point that out. But last Monday, I had the opportunity to go to Raleigh with our son and participate in the, or he participated actually, in the 100th anniversary report to the governor along with probably, I imagine, I guess around 300 other scouts from across the state. And it was a big function, and realized when we got there that we had a resolution that we could have passed, and we missed doing it in January. So I come back and put this together, but it's pretty much a recognition, 100th anniversary of the Boy Scouts in its formation on February the 8th, 1910. So what we have today, though, is growing into one of the bedrock institutions in our nation, and the work they do and the service they do throughout our communities and the way that they contribute to the moral and civic education of our young men is just tremendous. And I think it's quite a day for us to honor them, I believe, and have a resolution before you to do that. And once we approve this, I will actually go down and present it to Mr. Weatherman. I think he has some stuff he'd just like to share with us, a few comments, so.
We have the resolution that's in our agenda packet that we've reviewed. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
It's an honor and a privilege to be in front of you today to speak on behalf of the boys and the adults that are associated with Cabarrus County Boy Scouts. 2009, we finished up with just over 3,600 boys in Cabarrus County scouting. 924 adult leaders helped those boys and those girls, yes, girls and Boy Scouts, because we have venturing and exploring as part of our scouting program. That's open for boys and girls ages 14 through 20. One of the things we're most proud of here in Cabarrus County, the Central North Carolina Council had for the fifth consecutive year over 100 Eagle Scouts earned during 2009. And here in Cabarrus County, we had 53 of those 105 earn the rank of Eagle. So Cabarrus County has a very strong program. We're proud of that program. We're proud of all the boys and the girls that are a part of our program, and we look forward to more successes, not only in 2010, but in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing, one to note is yesterday in church, we had the bulletin of all the Eagle Scouts in our church since 1973, and it was interesting to see the young men that are getting their Eagle Scouts now and to look through it and know the parents who are the Eagle Scout, who got the Eagle Scouts back in the 70s and the 80s, just tells you how old I'm getting. Because I know the parents more than, better than I know the kids. But that's a great organization, fine organization. We have now, we have informal public comments, and I have Mr. Price Crutchfield. Mr. Crutchfield, would you like to speak?
I want to have a dialogue.
Okay. Well, come have a three-minute dialogue with us.
Thank you very much. I've got an issue here that I think should be concerned to all the citizens of Cabarrus County, Concord, and everywhere really. It seems that Concord Police are trying to cover up crimes that they've committed, not only by themselves, but schoolteachers too. There was an alcohol party at one of our schools, and the police, the resource officer at the school, I believe it was a female, was there with two employees of the school, two teachers, and they were consuming hard drink, mixed beverages, alcoholic beverages. Now, I asked the chief of police about this. I requested a meeting with the city manager and the chief of police, and he told me in the presence of a credible witness that, he said, I asked him, I said, "Is it against the law to consume alcoholic beverages on school property?" His answer was, "I chose not to make an arrest," and that wasn't the question I asked him. He never answered my question. The fact is, others have been arrested for consuming alcoholic beverages on school property in the past, and there's no deferred prosecution over here in the court about that, and yet the police and teachers aren't charged criminally for their actions. Something's wrong somewhere. I even had to talk to the school board attorney to get permission to speak out. Why do I need to talk to a lawyer when I'm trying to communicate with the government about the police and the teachers breaking the law on school property? It's against the law to consume alcoholic beverages on school property. I'm going to answer that question that I asked the chief of police about that he wouldn't answer. Again, there's a different standard for the police and the government than there is for everybody else. I'm just trailer trash. I've been arrested 15 times, and I assure you, I didn't consume alcoholic beverages on school property. My arrests were lesser standards of arrests, like cussing on the sidewalk to the police who cussed me first. Yeah, I'm very upset about that. We're in a democratic society, and it seems like I've got to talk to a lawyer to communicate with the government, an expensive lawyer in Charlotte. He represents the school board. I don't want to talk to a lawyer or have dialogue with a lawyer. I want to speak out freely and openly without the fear of being arrested. Clearly, I've been arrested in the past for just doing that, speaking out, expressing myself, not harming a soul. No damaged parties in court have ever harmed a soul, but 15 times, the citizens' tax money's paid for me to be in court, to be in harmony with the Constitution. These criminals over here, they broke the law. They need to be prosecuted. They need to be arrested and prosecuted, just like the law prescribed, just like I was when I was charged with cussing on the sidewalk, who no one ever complained about but the police were exempt to begin with. Do I make myself clear? I mean, I don't want to be arrested here, and I'm not really trying to have a dialogue. I'm just trying to talk.
I do not see we have any old business on the agenda. We have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now, the next matters we have is G1 on page 96 of our agenda. It's Commerce 2010-2011 Home Program Public Hearing. I call on Mrs. Kelly Sifford to present it.
Good evening. What we have before us is the public hearing for the home program. In order to participate each year, we're required to hold a public hearing, take any public comment that may be available. We're not certain how much we're expecting this year, somewhere between probably $113,000 to $127,000, going on the low end and projecting three units, possibly four, for those funds for rehab.
Thank you. I'll open this matter up for public hearing. Does anybody like to speak for or against the proposed grant? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. There is nothing, no action that we need to take at this time, so that there is no vote that needs to be had. Moving on to G2, which is found on page 100. This is the Parks Department Approval of Modification to Parks Fees and Charges Policy for Fiscal Year 2010-2011. Mrs. Strong.
We normally do our fee and charge policy in July, in June, to be effective July 1 with the regular budget, but that's one of the changes that we were asking for here for ERO's recommendation, is to move it to the beginning of the year so it coincides with the majority of the programs as they start earlier in the year and not be in the middle, like for example, the pool. The pool opens in May. We would have to wait a year, a year and a half before we could change fees if we were going to do that. That's the first thing. We don't have a lot of changes, but there are a few that I would like to highlight, one being closing all of the parks one hour earlier than we normally do. Currently, in the winter hours are 9:00 to 6:00, and that's November 1 through February 28th, and we'd like to change that obviously to 5:00. And then the beginning March 1 for the summer hours, March 1 through October 31st, we would operate until 8:00 instead of 9:00, with the exception being Frankless Park beginning April 1. With softball games, we stay to open until 10:00, so we would stay open until 9:00. Everything else would close at 8:00. All would open Saturday and Sunday at 8:00, as well as through the week. One other item that we had is a clarification. We currently have an after-hour charge of $25 per hour per facility. It's a little vague in that the facility was listed as a soccer field, so if somebody was wanting to rent the soccer complex, that would be $275 an hour instead of $25 an hour as a facility. So what we've recommended on that would be a $100 flat fee and a $25 per hour facility per staff, and that staff would be determined by administration, depending on how many folks we would need there, based on the number of people coming in. Excuse me. A lot of grammar corrections and clarifications, not a lot of grammar corrections. There's a lot of clarifications and a few grammar corrections are, that's basically the rest of it. We have gone through the camping cabins policies and made some clarifications there, as well as the softball tournaments and made some few little changes there because we do have so many requests to use the facilities now, which we didn't before, and we're trying to make it fair for everyone. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Strong? Do we have a motion to approve the modifications to the Parks Fees and Charges Policies for fiscal year 2010-2011?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the commissioner or for Mr. Day. Approving these changes that they have made will not in any way lock us into this if, as we go through our budget discussions. Is that correct?
That's right. You can change them anytime you want.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I was just going to make a comment. I wasn't quick enough on the button, but during the, two weeks ago, we have our, for the people who listen at home, we do have our agenda meeting. At that time, you did indicate that all the members of the Parks and Rec Commission approved these changes.
Yes, at our...
Your committee or your board is what's bringing it to us to make the changes.
That is correct.
I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
I think sometimes in this meeting, because we had the meeting two weeks ago, we might already have some of our questions answered, and I don't want the public to think that we don't have questions.
Right.
You answered questions two weeks ago.
Yes.
Which was, that one in particular, I thought was important. That being said, I would make the motion that we approve the request.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is G3 on page 126, which is a request to increase rabies vaccinations for dog, or vaccination for dogs and cats administered during countywide rabies clinics. And we had initially referred this to the Animal Protection and Preservation Advisory Committee for a recommendation, and Mr. Carruth, Commissioner Carruth.
Yeah, that, we met actually on February the 1st. There was some discussion about it, but pretty well, it was a unanimous consensus that, yeah, that was, we needed to do that and raise the fee to $10. We have a veterinarian actually sits on the committee, Dr. Stuart Roberts, who, you know, said it is definitely needed to do that in order to cover the cost.
And it was not a large increase, I don't believe.
It was not. In fact, I heard, even though we said here, what, the $4, it was actually, I think, been charged at $7, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was $7. So it's not that great of a burden to increase that.
Does there anybody have any questions? Do we have a motion to increase the fees for rabies vaccinations administered during the annual county-sponsored rabies clinic? $10 is authorized by NC General Statute 130A-187.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is appointment to boards. We have the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, and we have a motion to appoint Mrs. Elizabeth Ryan to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending February the 28th, 2011.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is the Agricultural Advisory Board. We have a motion to appoint Thomas E. Barbie and Eddie S. Moose to the Agricultural Advisory Board for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2013, and acknowledge the service of Mr. Taylor and Mr. Hudson.
So, second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next is the Animal Protection and Preservation Advisory Committee. We have a motion to appoint, to reappoint Lieutenant David Taylor, Dr. Stuart Roberts, Mrs. Patsy Beaker, and Ruth DeMarcus to the Animal Protection and Preservation Advisory Committee for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2012.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Karen Britt and Donna Rogers to the Advisory Committee for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2011?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the CJPP, which is the Criminal Justice Partnership Advisory Board. We have a motion to reappoint Ms. Ravella Nesbit, Karen King, and Sally Coleman for three-year terms ending February the 28th, 2013, including the exceptions to the appointment policy. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. On the Parks Commission, we have, do we have a motion to appoint Tracy Boom, or Broome, excuse me, Broome, to the Parks Commission for a three-year term ending January 31st, 2013, and to reappoint John Park and Margaret Houston to the Parks Commission for three-year terms ending January 31st, 2013.
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have a motion on, this is the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion to remove Mrs. Anita Tucker from the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee? She was unable to complete the required orientation.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I call everyone's attention to the, in the audience, as well as at home, that there's several boards and committees that certainly use your help. We went through quite a few of them tonight, starting off with the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee and going all the way through. There's quite a few opportunities for people to assist and help out within the community, and we'd ask that if you have an interest, please contact either Mrs. Honeycutt at 704-920-2100, or you can go to our website at www.cabarruscounty.us/commissioners/boardsandcommittees.html. It certainly helps out with that. We have in our packet, nothing to be acted on, is the Tourism Authority Second Quarter Update, which you have before us, and do we have any comments or any discussions of the board members at this time? Yes, Commissioner Poole?
I would like to make a request for anyone who's listening, kind of goes out to anybody that might be able to help us out. A lot of our high schools have career technical education courses, and as components of those courses, they need to do job shadowing and internships, unpaid internships, and I know that at my school, we...
And I know that at my school, we have a need for six positions unpaid for students in housing and interior design. So, if there's anybody who has a design business that could use an able-bodied high school student and/or a, if you're a builder, I know times are tough, if you can use somebody who, again, would be unpaid, not only my school, but I'm sure the other high schools could use job sites. So, you can contact me, and I'll be happy to get the information to the proper sources. You can contact any of the high schools, and I'm sure the principals could put you in touch. Mr. Williams is here from the school board. I'm sure he could help put people in touch, but I know that we need job sites for housing and interior design students, and that's part of their coursework, so they don't have a choice but to find a place. And we know times are tough, and some of the people I normally would call aren't doing that anymore, so if anybody can help out, we would appreciate it, so, thank you.
Any other comments? I do want to extend a thank you for Chairman Williams from the Board of Education coming out to our meeting tonight and knowing more about what we're doing. We certainly appreciate your attendance. Thank you, sir. With that, we do have two closed-session items, and then afterwards, for everyone's knowledge, we will not be recessing because, or excuse me, we will be recessing, we'll not adjourn, because we do have our board retreat scheduled for Camp Spencer on February the 26th, so that after all of our business is conducted tonight, we will recess until 4:00 PM on February the 26th at Camp Spencer for our retreat, and that will be on Friday the 26th, Saturday the 27th, and depending on how much work we can get accomplished, it will be over with on the 26th, on Saturday, and do not anticipate going into Sunday, but we do definitely have those two days, just for everybody to know, in case nobody's hanging around after our closed-session meeting. With that, do we have a motion to go into closed session for, and also to invite Mike Downs, Mr. Downs, Deputy County Manager and Jonathan Marshall, Commerce Director, as it relates to property acquisition, and then a closed session for the location or expansion of business, industry, and invite Mr. John Cox and Mr. Ryan McDaniels for that? And then also, finally, to consider, let me see here, personnel issues. Do we have a motion for those three to go into closed session and invite the respective parties?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I hope everyone has a good evening.